Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 6th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of exits around the room and now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A quick housekeeping note, we have said farewell to our esteemed board member Tori Kane at the last meeting, and we're here tonight to welcome new board member Ann Weiser, who until now has been an alternate. Welcome, Ann.
Thank you.
And thank you for sitting through every meeting that you've sat through since you were first appointed and reviewing all of the past minutes. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for sire of duchess. They're requesting extension of time to commence a complete construction. This is located at 4185 Albany Post Road. It's the site that has had a sign that says, "Medical Suites Coming Soon," for about the last four years. They have started construction in the sense that they, I believe, installed some other stormwater management early on, but they have not started full building permit. They can motion to reopen the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to come on this application? Just for the board's dedication, we were waiting until a final capstone of the stone wall that had been destroyed by a car accident had been repaired, and it's been repaired.
Yay.
Any comments from consultants? Any from the board? Make it a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone has this resolution?
It'd be me.
Thank you.
Resolution number 58-08H, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants two-year extension pursuant to section 108-9.6A of the code of the time in which an applicant must commence construction to and including June 17, 2019, and an extension of the time in which to complete construction to and including June 17, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for the enclave at Hyde Park. As a reminder, this is a re-subdivision of 74 single-family lots into 25 two-family lots or two-family homes, which will result in 50 dwelling units. The applicants are seeking approval for a re-subdivision, site plan, and special use permit because clustered housing more or less is required in this district. Make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So if you'll notice, colleagues, the applicants are not here tonight. I think that I can put it kind of mildly to say that we've gone through this pretty thoroughly, and it appears as though most of what the planning board would be reviewing has been finalized. However, because this was a subdivision and lot lines are changing and they include separate lot lines that are owned now by transportation corporations, waterworks corporations, et cetera, it's a complicated approval for us to handle legally. Ms. Paladoro has drafted resolutions. They're just in draft form. We'll be sending those to you if we haven't already. But one of them has 21 conditions, the other has 20. Mrs. Sotero has reviewed them as well. I do want to say that there are some duplicates that satisfying one would satisfy the resolution for the site plan and special use permit. However, a couple of the conditions require town board or town attorney input, and Attorney Bepalanski is on vacation this week, so cannot review them. I mean, one, we actually need language from him for. In the meantime, we've sent the draft resolutions over to the applicants and their attorney, their consultants, so they're able to review them, and if they can get rid of any of them before the next meeting, then we'll just take those off. We expect to have clarification on, I think just today we found out, Pete, that the speedies permit lapsed, so that'll have to be a condition as well.
Yes, that's correct.
So there's some information.
Being, it's in the process of being renewed.
Renewed, right.
And it will be, but they're waiting for Health Department to issue approval first, then the DEC will follow.
Right. For example, we didn't have the information that it had lapsed, so all these things are required we put into the resolution, so that's basically it. That's the reason why I said to the applicants that I didn't think they'd come here tonight. Further, we've had no verbal public comment. We just had the one letter from a neighbor questioning any drawdown effects on the well, on his well or surrounding ones, and we addressed that before. So any further comments from the consultants? Mrs. Sotero, Ms. Paladoro? Any comments from the board?
Did we open the public hearing?
Oh, did I not open the public hearing? Make it a motion.
Yes.
I thought I did.
I thought we did.
Yes.
Okay, good. We're good, we're good, sorry.
It was Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, I did it. Okay, as long as we.
Any comments from the consultants?
No.
Left or right?
Sort of looked at, yeah.
Ms. Weiser, I should just go ahead and now state for the record, since you've been in the audience all this time, we've been reviewing the application. You feel ready to vote when it comes time to vote in two weeks, we hope? Thank you. There being no public comment? I don't think there's public comment, but if that, we wouldn't even like to speak about this application from the public. Make it a motion to adjourn this to September 20.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Wright Homes. This is another re-subdivision.
Line through this.
Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So in essence, for the audience, this was a three-lot subdivision that was approved many years ago. The applicant has been having a hard time selling it. Realtor has sold it with brass because he had one common drive, which is not popular apparently for three single-family houses. So they first proposed three new single drives after hearing public comment about possible impacts to neighbors' wells and also blasting. They came in two weeks ago with plan revisions that indicated that they would now have a shared drive, relocating one approved housing location further closer to the road, and only two houses would share a driveway. This was met, I think, with more or less approval from my colleagues and myself. In the interim, I was asked to schedule a site walk. Ah ha, one of the neighbors is here. I was asked to schedule a site walk and did not hear back, and Mr. Sotero then wrote a note to Mr. Martin, their engineer.
He called too last Friday, left the message.
And we still haven't heard anything back. And after I saw your email, I sent another email asking, saying it would be convenient to maybe do it on the weekends, et cetera. I still haven't heard back. So at this point, we're left not knowing when to adjourn this to, because we haven't heard anything. We received no new information since the last public hearing, so we can discuss tonight whether we want to adjourn this for two weeks or to October 4th to allow the applicants' consultants to still get information into us, as well as schedule a site walk. In the meantime, would anyone from the public like to speak about the application? You're welcome to come on up and speak.
Is it ready for you?
No, sir. All we got was the last meeting where they've revised it so that now they won't be removing any of the rock that they were going to be doing that's closer to your property, and the original driveway will be used for two houses, and there's a driveway that will be used for the third one that's been relocated. The open space has been, it's reverted to where it was when we first made the approval, so the rock outcrop that people were concerned about is actually part of the open space now, which is why we had it there in the first place. So we actually think these are improvements to what he wants to do because they go back closer to the original subdivision approval, but we're still waiting on new information from the applicant. We are also waiting on a request for the open space deed restriction that was first made back in February that we still haven't received. So that's about it, what you heard last time. But I appreciate you coming out.
Thank you for being here.
Sure. Anyone else in the public would like to speak? Or anyone would like to speak? Any comments from consultants or the board?
I'm going to recommend that you continue it for at least a month because.
Yeah, 10 fours, what?
Deadline for the next meeting is probably tomorrow.
It would be tomorrow, the deadline, so agreed. Any other comments?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, may I motion, make a motion to adjourn this to October 4?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Those who have been waiting out in the hallway cannot come in. We're now at a public hearing mode. We're back into workshop. And the first item on the agenda is Bellafield, which we once knew as the St. Andrews property, our St. Andrews historicite park now called Bellafield. The applicants have submitted applications for subdivision and site plan approval for the very first sub-phase 1A of the overall approved concept plan. Part of the discussion tonight will center on hotel architecture, but the main purpose of the evening was to circulate for lead agency because we now feel as though we have complete packages ready to go. And I believe Mr. Boudreaux brought the materials we need to insert into the environmental assessment forms to circulate and to, for the board's knowledge, at the agenda meeting, we had our consultants and those present, which was Ms. Weiser, Ms. Denapley, and myself go through the circulation sheet, so we set all that up and informed the applicants of the number of things here. So let me turn it over to you guys at this point in time. I don't know, Larry, you want to lead or Ms. Ventile, who?
Yeah, we're going to be a few minutes to set up. What we have brought tonight is an amended PowerPoint that shows response to the comments that were made at the last meeting relating to the architecture, and we do have a materials board to discuss with you.
Thank you.
And, but that said, we're certainly open to any further comments and discussion this evening, but perhaps to channel the discussion, would it be appropriate to start with that, with the amended PowerPoint?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
So, and we'll give you time.
So we'll do that as soon as we set up.
While they're doing that, do you want to take care of the waivers while they're setting up?
Yes, actually. Let's do that.
Good idea.
We also have a couple of waivers. The first waiver request is by Eleanor Wilkinson. It's a site plan waiver request for a kitchen addition and porch. It's located at 38 Main Street, just down the road here. If anybody's had a chance to go by, it's actually be a nice addition. It's a small house and it'll expand out nicely because it's located, if you're standing at the Veneville Mansion site, you could, if you craned your neck, see it clearly, but it's pretty much hidden, so it's not visible from the river, however, and not actually from the main site, just from the garage. We have a recommendation from the senior administrator to waive this, so any comments from the board or questions?
No.
As this resolution?
I have.
You got rewarded a lot tonight.
Oh, yeah, no, she overloaded me. I told her. Resolution number 2017-36, whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Eleanor Wilkinson on August 24, 2017, for property located at 38 Main Street, Hyde Park, New York, and whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Wilkinson Kitchen and Front Porch Alterations. Regarding the specific request is received August 24, 2017, and as amended August 27, 2017, by submittal of detailed list of change and as identified in the building permit application filed for this project.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next waiver request is for Antonio Skanga. I hope I'm saying that correctly. Mr. Skanga was in the audience, but I told him he could leave. He's seeking a waiver in order to install a air conditioning and heating system on the exterior of his home at 61 Fuller Lane. I visited the site and sent photos to Ms. Moss and to our secretary. It is not visible from the river, even in leaf-off periods, because there's a rock outcrop on the other side of it, and I was excited, actually, as a neighbor, to see that the new owner has actually cleaned up the site really nicely. It looks really good, renovated the kitchen, so we have the recommendation from our senior administrators. So who has this file?
I do. Site plan waiver, September 6, 2017, resolution number 2017-37, whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Antonio Scanna on August 23, 2017, for property located at 61 Fuller Lane, Hyde Park, New York, and whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Antonio Scanna HVAC regarding the specific request as received August 23, 2017, and as identified in the building permit application dated August 11, 2017, for this project. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and now we can get back to you guys if you're ready. Good suggestion, Victoria. Do you need help with the?
I just want, if we shut the lights on that side?
Sure.
Is there a switch? Is it for that side?
Cynthia?
Experiment. That's up, that's for us, it'd be to the right.
That might be the back there.
I think that they all run that way. It's one of the ones.
There you go.
Bingo.
I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Okay.
We all set? All right, so just from a paperwork standpoint, we, Cynthia, I meant to give you the SWIP, but we did bring a additional copy of the SWIP. I know Tad probably took your copy, so here's, so there's that copy. Also, the 10 copies of the full EAF, we revised that with the plan documents and the additional elevations that Bill provided last week, so they're in there. And I also have seven separate copies of both the elevations and the plan sets to distribute to the board if they want to see them.
Thank you.
Okay. And then with that, we'll turn it over to Bill.
Good evening, everyone. No, sorry. Good evening, everyone. What probably do you want to do is just update everybody on the last revision of the elevations. And this, this was the elevation that we modified with your help in recommendations. So we're going to see some different color schemes here, so don't pay attention to what's shown right away, but we have all different, different color schemes we want to walk through and get the board's opinion. But what this does is it shows the updated elevations, and down below is the porch area that we talked about. We ripped out all the, with the gingerbread, and we just kept the simple railing like we have up on the balconies, and so that's essentially the elevations that, from responding back to all the comments that we had from the last time. So this is, the first one, I might want to go back, sorry about that, John. This is more of a gray scheme, and, you know, after our meeting last week, when I stayed over, went up to the FDR complex up there and took a lot of photographs, a lot of pictures, walked around, especially like we talked about that barn structure out there. But also, it was very interesting seeing some of the out parcels, so the out buildings with the different colors. And so that's where possibly this grayish color's coming in. The next scheme is more of a green, more of a forest green type color. And then the last scheme, I believe, we have is, that was the last, it was, it was more of a, this is not a yellow, it's a beige, but so these are the three schemes we're looking at, and so I thought for a discussion today, we can all talk about some of the thoughts, and is there, should be another fourth scheme we should be looking at also? So that's fine, you know, because we're hopefully honing in on what we're looking at from an architectural standpoint. And then, as we talked before, we're turning the stone as we talked about, so this is a great view if you're down on Route 9 on the corner where the light is right now, looking up, so you'll see that stone that wraps around, and that would be the other side of approach. These one-story areas with the windows on the first floor is an outcropping of some meeting rooms that we have on it, and also you can see some of the stone, how it does pop back also on that whole thing. So again, it's just a, that's the old scheme with all the gingerbread on it, so we don't want to show that anymore. It's okay. And again, the renderings, and what we'll do is when we decide a color, we'll update all the renderings and make sure the board has all the updated renderings with the right color. But right now, it's just more of the massing and the architecture, looking at the stone, and we'll talk about the materials too, which we brought. Yeah, so again, these are just from the older elevations.
That's not an elevation of the hotel.
Right. Well, depending how much you want to pay.
We're booked, except.
So we don't, so you could back up.
Before, if you could go back to the first floor plan, just want to clarify something that came up at the meeting.
Floor plan.
Yeah, sorry. The meeting rooms, I believe, are here?
That's correct, yes.
And the dining area, such as it is, would be?
In the middle of the, right there, yes, right in that area.
Right. So there was a question by our consultant, Ms. Paladoro, as to whether there was a conference center. There isn't, as far as I can see on this level.
No, this is, this is the only meeting space that we have. We have a couple of boardrooms here, and then this one room would open up to seat approximately 200 people, depending on how you seat them, for lecture style, but again, for potential weddings, this would be a small little room where it could operate as a banquet area, but it's, it's very small.
And you don't have catering facilities inside this, so they'd have to be catered off premises.
Be all catered off-site, yes.
And these walls, are you saying removable?
Yeah, these two here are, yes, they're removable. So this, this whole space can open up to one large.
Okay.
Area right there. And then you got a terrace area out here, on this side here, and then back over in here.
Right, and the question was really whether the wastewater flows and the parking and everything had been calculated to accommodate that extra space.
Yeah, the wastewater has. Bill has given us a detailed breakdown of the entire hotel, and we allocated the flow for each space.
What about the parking? Is this going to accommodate 200 people on its own? I assume you would be thinking that 200 would all be staying there as well?
Pretty much. This was, this is really to accommodate the guest. It's not necessarily going out to market anything to the outside. It's really a guest amenity.
I can certainly see it being marketed in the future when you had more parking, and again, I, speaking for the board, I think I can do it on this. We want to see this be a success, so whatever you can, make it a success. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you by asking about that. I just wanted to clarify for our attorney.
So.
Anything else?
Not right now until we have the discussion.
Okay.
Would you like to see materials now, or do you want to hold off on that?
I'd love to see the materials. I could see them over there, but.
Yeah.
So.
Want the lights on? Want the lights back on, or?
Yeah. Looks heavy.
It's a little bit.
A stone. It's FDR stone.
So what we're looking at is an FDR stone, as you saw on the elevations, looking at a product that looks like slate, but is, it's a man-made product. This will go in where the port de chair roof is, down on all the lower roofs. We're looking at the, more of a slate, and then up high, up in these areas here, will be the, more like an asphalt, high-grade asphalt type of shingle that would have a shadow to it, so it really has some depth, as you say. This is the, more of the hardy plank siding, what it looks like, it'll look like wood on a thing, and then some of the trim, and then the windows. This is the, the brick that we're, we've been using on a lot of our different hotels, and we thought would match up really well here also. It's a, it's, it's called a Stanford rose. It's a more of a tumble brick. We completed a product, a courtyard by Marriott with this in a precast, which I could bring in some photos someday. Next time I'm up here, might have, it just turned out beautiful. So these are kind of the combinations and the color schemes, and again, this, this will be the color that we discussed, is what we're looking at on that piece. Questions?
Anyone have any questions? No. By the way, I've seen the synthetic slate. I know how much it costs. It's a nice addition.
Yeah, I think so. And really keep it so people can see it, not.
Right, you're not going to see it if I have it above, but there's a lot of slate, as you know, in our historic structures here, and I know when I looked at maybe putting it on myself, it's so, it hasn't, they guarantee a certain life, but it hasn't been used that much throughout what they predict would be the life, so they don't really know how long it would last.
Yeah, I think for the life of this hotel, it should be good.
Yes. So consultants, any comments or questions about the architecture? Nope? Good. Then Ms. Weiser, I believe you all received a copy of her memo to the applicants, but because she's been sitting in the audience, but we don't have a public hearing, so she's been able to speak, I asked her to get her comments on the record, so let's start with you to the left, Ann.
Can I have the?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So I think in an effort to reduce and to simplify and add refinement to the building and make it more of a mirror of the culinary a little bit more, what I would like to see is that we were to, we would lose the, or eliminate the siding there, there, and bring that back to the brick, eliminate the siding, and then the same thing with, so on all elevations, eliminate the siding and bring that back to the brick, which would more reflect the culinary. In my memo, I mentioned I thought we should take these two stone pillars slash bump outs to two stories instead of four, and then second thought, I'm thinking it should be just the, should be just one story of the stone, so that we don't have this second story of stone up here. So it's just one story of stone and then four stories of brick. The, I think that, I think what would, would help bring this, again, more into the, into the culinary is to be add stone coins to, it's going to be hard to get this to focus, on the, where'd we go? Did I lose it? I lost mine. Ah, stone coins to the corners here and here, here and there, and if this is, if this is in the same plane, the stone, it's, it's mirror coins would be over here and then over here. I don't know if that's in the same plane. When this becomes all brick, you could choose to add brick, sorry, brick coins here, I mean, the architects would decide where to add for, you know, more coins, but it could be here and there. So I don't know if I'm really clear about what.
Does everyone understand what coins are?
Oh, well, they're in the culinary.
It's, they're trim, I guess I'll call it, trim stone, and you'll see it, the culinary along the, along edges.
It's the white, that's right there, the white on the side.
There you go. Anyone had a chance to see it?
Just so we understand what it is. It's about adding detail to.
Yeah.
Corners.
Right there. Yeah. The next, I would, I would add, I would like to take out the, I would like to add the tooth-like dentals from the, that's these also in the culinary, at the roof line, the toothline dentals, tooth-like dentals up there. I would recommend putting those up all throughout the roof line. I'm, I'm, sorry. And we could also, and also again, like the culinary, in the window casements, add keystone lintels on the, on the, on the window, window casements. You can see, it adds a little bit more detail there, keystone lintels. And then I would also suggest removing the decorative trusses up here, here and here, and then adding the, the keystone dentals up there. And then with that, with that, when you, when you eliminate that architectural finery, it sort of asks, begs you to take a harder look at what the balconies, and you've already, you've already made that simpler, which is great, but I would take a better look at these balconies here to make them more in keeping with what, you know, not that decorative wood kind of Adirondack look more of like, something more weighty, like a stone or something. Again, that's the architect and engineer. My final thought was on the south elevation, which is, if you'll go to the south elevation. Yeah, sorry, no, yeah, but this is, there's expansive brick without windows, there's probably a reason for that, but does give the appearance of something that's very, very institutional, and I think facing Dorsey Lane, that's not very attractive. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Hoy, do you have questions you want to ask?
Things that I would like to address on that. If we go to the coins, I think that's a great suggestion, but I would not want to use white.
Okay.
I would use this to brick coin. I think it's more.
Speak up a little, I'm sorry.
If we do the coins, which I think is a great suggestion, I would do brick coins, the same color of the brick, instead of white coins. instead of white coins. It just blends a lot better, seems like it goes with the architecture versus slapping on a precast that has nothing to do with what the building looks like right now. So that's one suggestion. And then I think regarding, we go back and put brick in where the siding is. I mean, to us, it's either or, that's, we're fine with that, if you want to go in that direction. But that was a response from the two meetings prior, so I think, we're all with you guys. Whatever you need like us to do.
I understand, I fully appreciate that. I think what I'm trying to do is eliminate the number of, like, reduce the number of materials, because it gives it a very busy look. So if we reduce the materials, you'll start to get that more stately feel to the, to the building.
I think we have the essence of what we're trying to do here, and then the idea of the freeze up on top with the indentures is fine. I think that's a, that might work out as a nice little detail, I mean, that's not an issue at all. But, you know, we can respond to all these to a point where the keystones, you know, that, to put the keystones in, you'd have to have a precast type of product there, which would be very expensive right now by adding everything we're also adding too.
With all that stone you're losing.
Yes. Yes, and, right, and then, I think that your comments are very well taken. I mean, we were heading in that direction to start out with two meetings ago. And we're here to listen and kind of react to what the majority of the board would like us to do. I mean, that's what we're trying to, because we're all want to make sure this is a success ourselves, to architecturalize. And we want to get a really great buy-in from everybody here, said, you know what, this, we're all behind this product. And I think last meeting, I think Diane, you said it, that this is the entrance to Hyde Park, and this building's going to represent what happens in the rest of this whole area here too. So we're all with you on that, whatever, you know, we feel that the plans, the floor plans, the elevations are very close from how they look in the fenestration. Now it's a matter of what we want to do with the product and the materials.
Thank you.
I should add for the board, in case they don't know the term, dentil is spelled D-E-N-T-I-L, even though it looks like it might be little teeth coming out. For those who've lived here a while, you see it along the roof line for all the Baker-built houses, with all the stone front, they always had dentil around the top. It's a traditional style that makes it a little bit more elegant. The keystone lintels around the windows are, I think, directly from the Culinary Institutes, from Roth Hall. And I, even I myself didn't understand, when I was reading the letter, the two pillars you were referring to were the ones right up there, above, yeah, I didn't quite get that. So now I understand it, you're talking just about lowering it so that the stone is on one plane, and that it's all brick above, which I myself think is fine.
And that way, the stone has a relationship to the porch, rather than stopping at the second floor and having no relationship to anything else. I think at this point, when you have the stone limited to the first level, you, it really does have a, you know, have a strong relationship to the porch.
And before I move on to Mr. Murphy, do you have any comments? I mean, if we get rid of, if the hardy board is removed and it's all brick, then there's no hardy board, there is no color issue. But do you have a preference between the cream, the gray, and the green schemes?
Are you speaking to me?
No, Ms. Weiser. You're next.
I mean, my first reaction was yay to the gray, just because I wasn't a fan of all that color. But the green, I think, I mean, if you're going to go for color, the green is, will reflect the trees, I guess, you know.
It's an earth tone, the gray does look, by the way, a little bit more distinguished.
It does, so I guess I'll, I'll vote for gray if we go for color.
Mr. Murphy, your comments?
You guys got to be going out of your mind here. I, we kind of started with what she wants to change to, but I like the revision that you've got now. I like it in a lot of ways. I got to admit that I was a little skeptical when the subject of the porch came up, but I like it. And I was surprised myself. You know, I am built a hotel in a couple of years, and I don't have millions of dollars invested. So I, as one, want you guys to be happy with what the product you've got. You're the one marketing it, you're the one that has to make the profit with it. And I'm only interested, really, in you making a profit so that the rest of the town prospers. But if I'm, you're taking a poll, I'm with the gray, so I do agree one thing with her.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
Yes, if we look at colors, I'll go with the gray or the tan. Green looks a little too close to harmony color, and I've been there. And it seems to be, when you look at the front surfaces, the green tends to chop it up a little bit more than having a smoother, smoother surface. Another, the entrance to the outbuilding, the door, is it, what's the plan for that material?
The entrance to the outbuilding?
You're talking about the sewer barn cover?
Oh.
Yeah, the cover. Yeah, I think it's just fake wood, isn't it?
Purposes, I'll call it, I believe, you haven't settled on a final?
Yeah, no, no, we haven't, we haven't really looked at the architecture for the barn. I think that, again, going back to what's up at FDR's outbuildings, I mean, there's some really good examples of what this could be. Almost like a salt box type of design, the one I saw up there. Simple, but yet maybe bring some of that architecture into this structure here, I think it would be great.
And if I recall, the entrance is chained off so that only people who need to go in there, it's shown the plans as being cordoned off?
Does it plan to be dirt or gravel, or?
It's going to be inaccessible to this barn, I mean, it's not for the public, that's all, all it is is just a...
My thought on it was that...
There's a gravel drive going down, everything else is grass.
Yes, there's a gravel drive.
Okay, all right. Just my thought of it was, in Asia, I've seen a lot of driveways and parking lots that are the buried cinder block, you know, with grass growing in it, it's pervious, it's surprising how well it's maintained.
Grasscrete is what I think the property, yeah.
And when I saw the driveway going into this, that's what popped into my head. Not in favor of having it all brick, to me it looks too institutional, and I'm not particularly in favor, I don't know if you are, of having kind of a CIA knockoff, so.
Thank you, Ms. Dexter?
So I had also sent an email, but I don't think anybody else saw my email. I think I only sent it to Mr. Hoy, Mr. Guardio, Mr. Mulroy, and Mr. Oates, I think.
Did you get it?
So I had, I'm showing the elevations to people in the town. And when they, I've heard it now multiple times, when they took a look at this proposal, the first thing they said was, "It looks like the dorms up at Duchess Community College."
Right, I remember that now, yes.
Conklin Hall.
That's correct.
And it has brick color, brick color, brick color, brick color. White peaks, white peak roof, it has a bump out. And I don't want to model it after the dorms. They're fine for the college, so I would kind of want to go away from that. So I like Ms. Weiser's comments about trying to just simplify this a little bit. There's probably a happy medium, I'm kind of looking at this, and I don't know, I, you know, again, to me, architecture is like art, it's in the eye of the beholder. I like the idea of bringing the stone down, because as you do look at it, it's kind of, I don't know, she's using the terms like planes and all this stuff, so maybe that's what I'm seeing that I don't, that I'm not a big fan of. If it were all at the same level, that might be good. But as far as doing something that's not exactly the culinary, on the rear side, right? You can show the west elevation. I think what I do like is surrounding the really big window is, I do like that not being brick. And I would like it gray, and it doesn't have to have all the stone there. I don't like the green, I don't like the cream. To me, that looks like Conklin Hall. And if you do get a chance, you can query and you can see tons of pictures of Conklin Hall. But I do like the idea of, like, simplifying, I like that you took out all that extra work on the lower-level porch. I think that makes it nice and simple. I also sent an email that showed, my favorite is at the Vanderbilt. We're going to talk about favorites, the Carriage House. And there's a coach house and a carriage house, both associated with Vanderbilt. And they would take the wood, the wood trimming at the peaks into a darker color, instead of a brighter color. And that's kind of what I was looking at, saying, well, maybe they could bring a darker tone to the top. Because if you're going to go, the thing about the white, that if you're not going to mimic the culinary, maybe, pick an element that you saw at FDR, maybe, that's not white. So I really appreciate you working with us, and I don't want to change my mind, but after seeing the dorms, I'm like, yeah, I think maybe we could make a few changes on this.
I should add, the Conklin Hall dorms, when Anne was saying that there's brick and color, the color is different color hardy board. And they actually have green, russet, and cream along with, yeah, it's pretty busy, but it's really long. It's got more rooms than this does, there's, it's 465 rooms. So it's, and there's a grade change, so at any rate, I think part of the reason why this was described that way is just because of the colors that were initially used, honestly. But the peaks do look a little similar, so I passed by it on my way to the trustees meeting, so I see it often. But this isn't going to be quite so long and bulky, this is a much smaller space. Mr. Oliver?
First off, I really like the material selection that you guys have provided with the, you know, the slate roof style and the red brick and the stone. I'd also have to agree that the colors, in my opinion, kind of make it really busy. I think if we stuck with the brick and the stone, I think that would, you know, that would go well. Another thing about the west elevation on the two pillars that Anne was talking about, I think if we brought those down one story, and then the next two, next two bumpouts in each direction, keep that at two stories, and then after that, bring that down to the first, so you kind of are making a, you know, a peak up. And being that this is the gateway to Hyde Park, I look at the east elevation, and I'm in love with it, and I said this two meetings ago, and unfortunately I wasn't able to make it at the last one. And I just think, even though it may not be the main entrance or provide the same function, if we could get something like that on the west elevation, so that that's what you see, in my opinion, I think that just really brings everything together on the front facade. And looking at the west elevation, it just kind of looks, you have this huge expansive facade, but it's not really broken up, and that might break it up better, in my opinion.
Go back to, just to clarify, on the west elevation, what I think I heard you say is, if you kept this at this elevation here with the stone?
Correct.
And you come up and stop the stone at this, this point right here?
Correct. And then after that, go down to the first, yeah.
Then, is there, what about this area here, is this to be brick in your, in your vision, or?
Correct.
Okay. So all these would be brick?
Yeah.
Then you'll get more of a monotone of elevation.
And then let, let the tapering stone kind of play off of that.
It'll be, be a very plain elevation.
Yeah.
That's all said and done.
And then add a larger structure where that is there, to kind of extend that facade out. So kind of have the peak here and come out to kind of mirror off of these changes. So you're, you know, you're coming off of that and creating a bigger space in here, like you have on the, on the east elevation.
The...
Because that's what you're going to see from...
Do you mean like the drop-off area, would you like to see that bumped up some?
But keep, but keep the...
Wrong way, sorry.
So what you're saying is if we would increase this height right in here, and along this, these areas right here, what will happen is if you rent the second floor room, all you'll see is a plain of roof. You won't be seeing anything at all. Because we don't have a lot of distance here, unfortunately, to do what we did here, which is, you know, bump this really far out would be great. But, you know, maybe we can just try to do it with materials as much as we can. That would be the only thing, it's just, unfortunately, I wouldn't want that second floor room.
Yeah, especially with, you'll probably get some river views there.
Great, I, well, if not, it'll be some better views than looking at our back of our roof, that's for sure. So that, I'll go back to the west elevation then. Why don't you go to the perspective, I think? I know this is not the right porch area, but at least when you see it in perspective, you do see the ins and outs. And then what will happen, Mr. Oliver, you're saying that we should also bring this down one level too, here?
I would say bring that down one level and wrap it around the entire building.
Okay, so unfortunately, I don't have a copy with me of our first presentation, but that's pretty much what we had initially. Except for, yeah, well, pretty much, yeah.
The roof lines were different, and...
Have that copy with you at all?
I was just saying, in the first presentation, the roof lines, I mean, the roof lines and the bumpouts were changed.
A little bit, yeah. But I think one of the things that, that's exactly, we had these all in hardy plank on the first proposal, but our brick came way down, all the way in here, but we'd ever had these in brick before. Which we'd be glad to put an elevation together, wouldn't take much time to show you what that would look like. But you're going to see a mass of brick on the backside, there with no breakup at all, besides the ins and outs of these areas here. But it'll read, with the, with the stone being down here, I actually probably bring this up here, down, down, up here, and then up here with stone, back down, up, and back down there. It'll be a...
More of the idea was just to get the material more consistent without having, being so busy with the colors and...
I think one of the pieces that we did react to, we tried to react to, is this Moscow. This, you could find a building like this anywhere, Montreal, New York City.
Plaza.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. But what it does, it, this is an architecture where it's three elements, it's tripartite design, is what they call it. And so that's where we were trying to react to, is by having this one elevation here, middle elevation, and then the top elevation up here, to kind of break up some of that massiveness that you're going to see with all brick.
If we are going to have color, I would go with the gray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Napoli?
I am in total agreement with Mr. Murphy. Is he still breathing? You guys must be going crazy, you have seven people with seven slightly different ideas, but that's why they pay you those big bucks, I'm sure. And we're making you earn every dollar. I was very impressed with the letter that Ms. Weiser sent to you the other day, and it gave me some food for thought. It also made it clear that I have probably totally lost the battle of not having brick and just doing like a Wallace Center, but that's okay. So we move on. I do like the suggestions of sim... I do like the suggestions of simplifying it, and I know I've said that in the past. This is much better. I think we've come a long ways. Being said, saying that, I think we still got a bit of a way to go, unfortunately, Mr. Murphy. I think, though, we're headed in the right direction. And it really does help when we get to see, after we've had our discussions, and then you do a rendition, I mean, you, you know, you've put a lot of thought, we put a lot of thought in, we think this is how it's gonna look, and then sometimes you go, oh, no, that's not the way we thought it was gonna turn out. I totally agree that if we could get rid of the siding, that would be much calmer of an appearance. But we're going to have siding, I too vote for gray. Though, I'm sure we could have other choices too. And I agree that the Adirondack look, if you're going to balance the culinary on one side, and this is gonna be the dramatic balance on the other side of the road, and if that's what some of the initial drawings are, that we're maybe not mimicking the culinary, but you're balancing it, then it needs to balance it more, and thereby, the Adirondack look has got to go. The siding would go, I like the added details of the, that Ms. Weiser had suggested, all of them. I'm not gonna sit here and repeat them all, because I think you have the letter and you know. I still would like to have you entertain the concept, and I understand that it did not go over well, this whole graduated down for various reasons. But is it possible to do just one story step down on either end as a balance?
Can you please point out what you mean?
So, if you bring the end section down one story, and you do the same thing on this side, just one story, so that you get what you were suggesting of a peak in the middle. So...
Do you mean, just not...
Just drop it one story down.
So that the peak would then be on the third floor rather than the fourth?
The fourth floor. Because if this is a five-story building, and you're dropping it down just one, so it would be, but Octitech, that would give us some interest without the radicalness of all the tapered down. Because I understand that you, it's difficult to accomplish that, but it also supplies us with some drama in a very stately fashion. On the first floor, are those the conference rooms or meeting rooms?
No, they're on the other end. This would be the pool, I think.
But anything that's, all right, on the eastern side. What's in these rooms on the first floor?
This has the, this is the meeting room right here, right, right here. All this is the meeting room here.
So, on the first floor?
Yes, yes. On that back elevation, if we go back to the other one, John, to the backside, oh, that's good, I mean, that's fine. This is all meeting in here, and then there's guest rooms here and guest rooms over here. So, they'll be taking advantage of the amenity of the porch, so, I don't know. Saying, what you're talking about is dropping here on both sides.
Yeah.
We would probably lose about 20 rooms if we did that, which, going back to Mr. Murphy's comment about, we all gotta be happy about making money.
Yes, absolutely.
That, you know, that...
So, there's no way the...
It'd be very difficult to lose that many rooms.
No, no, no. And I'm not suggesting that you should lose 20 rooms. Losing one room may be, but there's no way that it could be made up from that lower level if you push out a little?
There's no room to push out because you're following the footprint of the building that was approved as part of the concept plan that was adopted, I think.
Okay.
You're trying to stay within a certain space?
Well, are you talking about like, dropping it with dormers, or just dropping it for...
So, it's, the two ends are four-story.
So, this would lower down to this level here, and same on the other side. So, you lose one, two, three, plus the side rooms, all the way back. Because this is like a C-shaped building.
Okay, yeah.
So, you'd end up losing all those rooms in the back too. So, I'm guessing 15 to 20, plus or minus, I don't, until you look at it and study it. That would be...
Well, I kept trying here to, I think it, more than one way, maybe, to skin the cat. If the stone could be, is the stone equally wrapped around the entire building?
It goes to the side elevations. Let me see.
Because that would also give some continuity.
Yeah, see, what's deceiving about this, maybe there's a, that perspective might show it a little bit better from that corner. It's a one-story, yeah, next one, next one, there you go. See, you have a, you have a one-story building coming out right here where the meeting rooms are. See that plane right there?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why we stopped it right on that side there.
Okay, I see.
The other side, there's no reason why we couldn't just maintain it farther all the way through, sure. It's on the other, on the southwest side. Yeah, see, it stops right here.
On the next side, yeah.
Again, I think we got, the pool building starts over here too. So, we'd have to look at that, yeah.
I do like Ms. Weiser's suggestion of the coins on the corners. And looking again at the culinary, I mean, there are, if you're doing away, if you're doing away with the siding, and you're having just the stone and the brick, the coins in the off-white, and if you add that detail around the windows, it would give it some more substantial look, and would break it up.
Like I mentioned...
And again, sometimes you have to just look at it on paper, and then we look and we go, no, that was not a bright idea.
As I mentioned, I think the coins are a great idea, but I would not put them in white. I think it would, it would look like they're applied at an after, I mean, an after slot. It's more, it's more integral to the elevations where you can take the same material, make coins out of them. I think that's a great idea. The precast on all these windows would be extremely expensive to do, the precast with the keystone, especially if we go back now and change this all out to brick. The other material to look at is a stucco material too. I mean, we can look at stucco instead of, to get that contrast of materials versus, that way you wouldn't have the detail of what you're seeing up there, maybe that's what's throwing people off, but more of a cleaner look of product.
Because it's all gray stucco.
Absolutely.
Gray stucco.
Gray stucco, yeah, absolutely. No, that's, yeah, absolutely.
But that's directly from FDR also, his...
Yep, yep, on that one wing on the left-hand side, his library.
I love the color of the brick. I think, because I was gonna suggest a type of brick like that, and I said, oh, I don't have to flip that forward. And the stone and, are really, they're all very smart looking. And I thank you for all of your patience.
Sure.
And at one meeting, maybe the Octitech can come, and we can thank them in person too.
But then I gotta pay for him.
Yeah, I know.
He doesn't wanna come because he wants to see Hyde Park?
But he's gonna have to come up eventually, yes.
So, I'm gonna conclude with a couple of things. First, despite Mr. Murphy's kind of comments that we shouldn't be weighing too much on architecture, I think, as I said before, this sets the tone for whatever else is going to go there. So, it's important to me, and I think it's important to the citizens of Hyde Park. This, I hope, will last for hundreds of years, just like the Culinary Institute, and be a real success. So, we wanna make sure we get it right. This noted, I told you last time, I'm the one who likes the gingerbread, but I'm not gonna go there, because we already moved beyond. So, if I can kind of summarize what I've heard tonight, it might be helpful, I hope it's not too expensive, and you can certainly stick with these sizes, and I don't think you have to do them all, but it might be helpful if you had two elevations to show, one of which, I think that you need to have at least the stone up to the second level, otherwise, down here, it disappears. Particularly because we have to remember there's elevation, there'll be landscaping, and I don't think you'll see it otherwise. I heard three people say to lose the siding, and I'm gonna be the fourth. If you lose the siding and add the dentil, then whether you need the decorative trim up here, I'm gonna leave to you and the architect. But by seeing dentil, I almost feel like you need to have dormers up there then, because that becomes the more traditional style. But at any rate, that's, I'd like to see something like this. Anne's comments, Anne Dexter's, not Anne Weiser's, are almost separate. To her, this should go all the way up, the stone, to kind of frame the window. Anne's comment is that this is not matching, so to speak, it's too much in through here, Anne Weiser's. So, I don't mind seeing it go up that way, particularly if these are all going to be brick. I also like the coins, and while I love the lentils, I'm aware that the price point that you're gonna have to charge for this can't be that high, so we have to be mindful of your cost too. So, I'll go ahead and say, even though I think it'd be gorgeous, I'll take a no on that, I won't, I don't think it's necessary, just because of cost. You're already adding a lot here, and I'd like to see something get started on this site that can therefore be the mechanism that lets other things start happening on the site too, and I don't wanna get bogged down in that. And I think, just from what I heard, it seems like actually we're closer than what some might think, if you were just watching us. We're narrowing down on reducing the amount of materials that is there. We've all seemed to be, all seem to be in agreement that the coins, and by the way, that's Q-U-O-I-N-S, not like coins like this, that those would be kind of majestic and elegant addition to it. And again, I don't know, based on, this is ZH Architects down in the city, I don't know if, once they see the dentil, that they'll be the ones proposing this. I think a lot of this did come from Mohawk Mountain House, which legitimately has different looks, because their different wings and different additions occurred over many different decades, over the centuries. I like looks like that, that make it look as though it's been added on to, but I'm not sure that this really achieves that, because it still looks like one new piece, just with different siding, à la Conklin Hall. And I think that by reducing the colors, you're not gonna have that effect anymore. For the rest, I'll go with the simplified porch, because I think the porch is a great addition. And I understand that, like, this should be the pool area, I believe, starting over and through there, the exercise and pool. The conference rooms are down there, but you do have rooms here. And I love Chris's first thought about making this higher. This does then eliminate the desirability of all the rooms right there and right there. So, I think we kind of have to stay low on that side. Our concern, I mean, no one's really commenting about the east elevation, because we all seem to like it. Our concern is really more what presents to the public. And what's nice about this is initially, without having the porch and without having the area for humans to come in and out of, it almost seemed to be turning its back on Route 9. It doesn't do that anymore. So, I appreciate all the changes that have been made. If you wanna have a second elevation that, instead of showing the stone up, that would then show stucco where you think the stucco should go, and that'd be a suggestion we could then, but I'd like, even though it may seem like this is going to take a while, I'm certainly aware, after reading the comments from DOT, the preliminary comments prior to circulation, that there are some things we're gonna have to work out ahead of time. I don't want anything to drag us down, which is why I wanna get architecture done, early, now, so that we all kind of agree on this. And even though we may not agree on every detail, I heard enough of the individuals here that I'm confident that we're gonna come to something where, we may lose this, this may be my favorite, I've already lost that. But I wanna go along.
Do we notice?
I like, I like very traditional styles, so, and more antique styles, so. And I think that, as I said last time, the whole siding thing, the way it was going, both vertically and horizontal, that's, when, Mr. Horn, you said that maybe throwing me off, that threw me off from the very beginning, because it just looked dizzying to me, to have both the Dutch Colonial Revival look, which is the FDR stone, as you're calling this here, along with the more traditional brick from a different earlier time period, along then with these. And yet, I also understand why they came, they do look like some of the dormitories on the CIA campus, and they very much resemble Mohawk Mountain, which is higher up. So, I hope we've given you enough to kind of go on tonight. What I mostly heard was less Adirondack style and more traditional, and no one didn't like the coins. The only person really is Mr. Pickett, who said that he preferred to have something different there, so it didn't look monolithic. I think there's a way you can make it look non-monolithic, and that's why I was talking about keeping the stone here, but if you'd like to do, you know, even a third elevation that shows what this would look like just on the base, then you can. Again, I think it'd be lost that way, except for the other side, where you're gonna see it when you drive up initially. So, that should conclude our architectural discussion. Before we discuss circulating or read the resolutions, I just wanna point out to everyone that we did receive fairly detailed comments from the Department of Transportation. The overarching, as I called it earlier, kind of theme was that they would want to know, they're gonna want the planning board to understand and to work into how to phase the mitigations, that'll be subject to some discussions, obviously. At the, way back when, at our very first meeting, I said, if you're just doing the hotel, we've gotta figure out what DOT wants, because to remind the board, part of the mitigation measures that are proposed are complete redesign of the intersection at St. Andrews and Route 9. And I mean, substantial. This alone is not gonna trigger that. A lot of what triggered that was the residential use, because you had the entrance off St. Andrews that you're not even contemplating yet. So, so long as the board can establish some way for us to move forward that satisfies DOT and my colleagues, I don't think that's that big a deal. I'll also point out that some of the general plan comments that they pointed out actually have already been corrected, because of revisions we've gone through ourselves. So, I'll be interested to see what they say once they get the newest plans that they have, because some of these, I think, do kind of go away. There's also a couple of discussions about maybe, there's suggestions of maybe new mitigations. And again, just for the audiences and the boards, again, understanding, so the, what they sent to DOT would be the traffic impact study, which is the entire site. Plus, there's a look at any kind of delta there is from relocating the hotel and being a different size to here. I think you guys have done a great job on that. We always knew from the first traffic impact study that, once fully built out, and truly fully, that there would be some drops in levels of service at certain intersections. And they reference those. So, so long as DOT is fine with this, then I am too, because I don't know any other way to solve this without somehow making this into a six lane, which none of us want. We're a rural community, or semi-rural community, kind of a bedroom community at Poughkeepsie, but I don't wanna see six lanes of traffic going up, and then suddenly narrowing down into two in the middle of Route 9. So, that's what we'll move forward. Any other comments from you guys, your side?
No, we appreciate the comments, and I'm sure Bill will take them into consideration.
He's not bewildered by, as Mr. Murphy and Ms. Napoli said.
When he revives in the morning, he'll know much better about...
And you didn't have to wait till 10 o'clock this time.
That's right, that's right. We appreciate that as well. So, we appreciate everyone's comments, and I think there's merit in what everyone is saying. And it's very hard to describe, as you said, what you want if you can't see it at the same time. So, I think we hear the goal of simplification, of stateliness, of being a good neighbor to the CIA without mimicking the style, and putting a good face towards Route 9. So, I think we all share the same goals.
Oh, absolutely.
And now that we have materials, I think the idea of eliminating as many differing elements as possible to eliminate any busyness that might arise, and we're gonna try to do that while not making the building look more monolithic. I mean, Roth Hall is a very large building and carries that off in a very stately way, but actually is an institutional building. Whereas, we're trying to have this, share that presence, but in a way that doesn't read totally institutional.
Yes.
So, it is a subtle thing to manage, but I think what we're gonna do is get some elevations to you and come back and discuss this again. As you note, we have many issues to discuss. We decided not to even try to talk about DOT tonight.
Let's absorb it all.
Tom Johnson at Larry's office is absorbing all of that. Tom Johnson at Larry's office is absorbing all of that.
And as I said, this is in response to a plan that's actually been changed somewhat. I mean, some of it, like the bike and pedestrian, there's just, there's a lot of things here that I think, once they see the newer plans that we're going to send over to them as part of our formal circulation, I think that, I anticipate that they'll still be detailed, but they won't be quite like this. Some of them may be softer, some of the geotechnical and the traffic impact, that probably won't change that much. The other thing I just wanted to say, you brought it into my mind, is Ms. Weiser was, in her letter, stated that since this is a gateway, if you look at the CIA, Roth Hall is one pillar, and this would be the other pillar, and as I pointed out, I think at the last meeting and meetings before that, we're kind of looking at 108-4.5 as a guideline, because those are the site plan standards we use for everywhere, and those do discuss, state specifically, that if you have a site that's located adjacent to, which this would be, anything that's on the National Historic Registry, it should be consonant, not mimic, it'd be consonant. And I think that's where we're kind of going here, to look at, is it creates something, as Ms. Van Tals says so eloquently, have presence and a stateliness, yet also not look like where first a bunch of Jesuits lived in an institution, and now students are forced to go into it. So, because we don't want anybody forced in, we want this to be a welcoming presence, to draw people in, and the only other comment I heard was a discussion about bringing the stone all the way around instead of stopping. That's for you to consider and show on an elevation. That, to me, seems like a good idea, but I don't know what the difference in price is for the stone versus the brick.
It's about the same.
Okay, so that's just then an aesthetic that the architect can feel free to review, reject, et cetera.
Would that be on the east elevation, too? Are you talking about all the way around or just on the corners?
Well, actually, I thought just to go to the corners and stop, so that you would keep the east elevations just like they are. I didn't hear anybody complaining about the east elevations, except maybe the use of the siding there, too, although, okay, yes, so...
Mike, I got a quick thing.
Yes.
Could you go back to the east elevation, please? So I was just, sorry, west. My apologies. All right, so, right here, bring the stone up and then come down to right about here, come over and down again. So that way, it creates a focus towards the center and gives you that sense of...
That's a great idea. You're peaking, you're causing the peaks, or rather, a massing effect goes up.
And that will break up the expansiveness of the brick, and just, I figured I'd share that.
It's a great share.
Thank you.
Even though there's seven disparate voices, what's nice is each of us somehow managed to say something really intelligent and smart. I think that one really was, so thank you, Chris. Any other questions from you guys or comments?
We have received comments from DOH, and we're working with Morris on the comments, which we're making progress on, so we are moving.
Good. We don't have anything back from DEC, but we'll have something back, I anticipate, once we circulate ourselves. When would you like to schedule the next meeting, two, a month?
A month, I think a month would be good.
Okay, and Bill, Mr. Hoy, if you have any, feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or whatever, if I can assist in advance. As you know, I don't speak for everybody, but I have a good sense now of where each person is, and like I said, there's a commonality amongst all. So we'll put this on for the October...
Fourth.
Fourth meeting, and in the meantime, let's get started with circulating for lead agency who has this resolution.
May I just mention one item about the circulation? We had included in the EAF the three versions of the front elevation, so, I mean, I think that's certainly appropriate for circulation.
It's totally sufficient, it's totally sufficient.
It's more than sufficient, really, with, I don't want to confuse anyone with colors.
One of the questions I had is...
That we've moved beyond.
Are we, do we feel like we're ready to refer this to the county planning or 239M? I think we're just circulating right now for these.
Right now, it's just speaker circulation.
I wanted to have a more firm grasp of what the architecture would be before going to county planning, because they require all those things.
I think that's appropriate, yes, they do.
And they'll want more landscaping details.
Yes.
They've got a lot, there's a lot of landscaping details in there, but they may, so at any rate, then, Mr. Pickett, you have this resolution?
Yes. Resolution declaring intent to service lead agency St. Andrews at historic Hyde Park, known as Bellfield, September 6, 2007, resolution 2017-04. Whereas, 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 okay. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, acknowledges and confirms the design of the development of the St. Andrews PUD, now known as Bellfield, as a Type 1 action under SECRE, two, declares its intent to service lead agency in a coordinated review of the proposed action, and directs its secretary to send notice of its intent to reestablish lead agency to all interested and involved agencies.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just as a point of reference, to read the resolution, you would have the file in front of you, that was actually Mr. Oliver, you all had copies of the resolution. It's okay, it doesn't matter who opens it, it's just, I, this is why sometimes I don't let all the board have resolutions.
What did you just say?
That Mr. Oliver was supposed to read the resolution, because he has the official file.
He ought to be reading.
That also adds...
Look, Brett, I'll note that later for you wanting to read stuff.
Yeah, you'll get a whole stack.
I'll just move it down.
It was in my pile, I didn't ask for it.
So thank you for providing all the information that you did tonight. Mr. Hoy, thanks for driving over again, as always, and we'll see you in a month.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your time, and we appreciate all of the thought that's gone into the comments on the architecture. We agree with the importance of this building, and I think we're getting there.
If we preload this, so the architecture is solved, then everything else, to me, solves itself, because this is really the subjective part of it.
Right, right, everything else is very technical.
The eye of the beholder.
Legal and technical after this.
You know, when you...
Oh, nicely done.
Right, oh. Try that in Guantanamo.
What I had started to say to Mr. Hoy was when you drive up from Route 9 and you pass Marist College, it's a very stately-looking building, and they've done a beautiful job with the stone and the brick, and I think that is a wonderful way to start coming to the Northern Duchess area, that you see that, and then on either side, you will have the culinary, and then this hotel.
Do we need in German motion?
Nope. Have one more, let's add them.
Thank you.
Has everyone had a chance?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and sorry for that dramatic end.
My son proposed to...
Has anyone had a chance to review the minutes for the August 2 meeting? Yep. Your motion to approve them, and Ms. Weiser, your excuse from this, because you weren't present, or you were present, but you weren't on the board.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And we get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Email comments that...
Oh, my God.
...already revise some plans.